All right, we're about a minute early, but I think we can go ahead and we will open the meeting for the Pecosin Planning Commission tonight, Monday, March 18th, 7:00. And I'll call that meeting to order at this time and ask if you would join me in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you'll please stand. We'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. We will move on to the first item on the agenda tonight, which is the approval of the minutes. First, we have the work session, which was held February 21st, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So moved.
All right, Karen.
Commissioner Brennan.
Stand.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber. Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of four to one.
Thank you, Karen. And the next item is for the regular, I mean, the next approval of the minutes is for the regular session, which was February 21st, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes for the regular session?
Motion to accept as written.
And I'll take a second if someone, thank you, Libby. Karen.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Upstand.
Chairwoman Schreiber.
Aye.
And that motion was carried by a vote of four to one abstention.
Thank you, Karen. We'll now go to the audience for visitors. And at this time, anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission about anything other than the public hearing item on the agenda, this is the time you would need to come forward and give us your name and your address. And if there is no one here that is going to do that, we're going to close the audience for visitors and move right on to the public hearing item on our agenda, which is a conditional use permit amendment request by Fountains of Pecosin LLC. And I believe that probably Mr. Moses is going to make a presentation, Wylie, or...
Yes, ma'am. I would just say that this is, the actual extension that he's applying for is from June 27th, 2019, to February 12th, 2021. Same date that Phase 3 and Phase 4 expire.
Okay. So I guess...
But with that, I'll let Mr. Moses.
All right. Should we, okay, we'll do that and then we'll open the public hearing. I guess, since he's in, he's the one that's coming, it's a little bit different because he's in the audience. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Moses. We can see you got everything set up, so I guess we'll go ahead and do that, and then we'll do the public hearing.
Okay, well, thank you for letting me come tonight to ask for an extension or amendment to the existing conditional use permit for Phases 1 and 2. Just to give a little background for anyone who hasn't followed the bouncing ball about the Fountains, we started out just with the two pieces of property that's now this reverse L symbol here. Phase 1, we started that...
Mr. Moses, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, but if you could speak into that mic...
Okay.
Because the people at home will not be able to hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. Thank you. So we completed Phase 1, and then Phase 2 is not built yet. We've got two buildings approved for Phase 2, Buildings 2 and 3. And then, as we move forward with Phases 1 and 2, we took interest in what's now Phase 3 and Phase 4, and we were developing that or getting that approved in parallel. So just want everyone to know, there's kind of two sections, and what we're trying to do tonight is kind of just bring them all together by putting them all under the same timeline for a conditional use permit. So again, just a little more about the history. In 2014, we were approved a three-year conditional use permit for what is Phases 1 and 2. We had the construction plans approved for Phases 1 and 2. We proceeded into Phase 1 with Building 1 and completed that. And then we were, and did some site work in Phase 2 with the plans to go ahead and continue into Phase 2 and 3, or Phase 2 with Buildings 2 and 3. We just didn't get funding going quick enough. But as we were finishing up Building 1, we got another three-year extension on that conditional use permit so that we could go ahead and proceed with Buildings 2 and 3. The city has already approved the construction plans for both Buildings 2 and 3 that are in Phase 2. And we're presently finalizing the construction loans with a new bank now, and we plan to proceed with construction as early as possible. However, the conditional use permit for the two buildings we'd like to build is going to expire soon. So we'd like to, I'm here tonight to ask for an extension for those two buildings, and again, just pick a date in the future that aligns with another date that's on the other Phase 3 and 4. Just continuing with this, in 2016, September 12th, the conditional use permit, along with the rezoning, was approved for what is now Phases 3 and 4. And again, it's that September 12th date that, five years into the future from now, is the date we're looking at, asking for an extension for the conditional use permit for Phase 2. So again, it will line up with the conditional use permit expiration date for Phases 3 and The current construction plans, again, is to press forward as quickly as possible with clearing and site stabilization of Phase 2. We're going to do all the, all the site work in Phase 2, and then we're going to proceed with constructing Building 2 as the financing is coming available. And then we'll build Building 3 as soon as the bank is ready for us to do that. There'll have to be certainly leasing and tenants occupying it and stabilization and all the things the bank makes us do. And again, today's request, I'm just asking for conditional use permit amendment for Phase 2. So again, to make that expiration date consistent with the expiration date for the other part of the development. And again, that date would be September 12th, 2021. And that's all I have in the main charts. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
I'm not familiar with your project, per se. You're building 1, how many apartments are in Building 1?
There are eight total apartments, four two-bedroom, two baths. They're on the floor just above the ground level. Then above that are four four-bedroom, three baths, and they're townhouse style. There's interior staircase. So you've got basically the same floor plan as you do the two-bedrooms, two baths, but there's, there's an interior staircase in the great room that goes up to two more bedrooms and a shared bath and a common area.
So there are eight units in that one building?
Eight apartments in the one building.
And are they all rented?
Yes, they are.
They are.
Mr. Moses, I'm, I'm going, I'm going, before we get into asking him to, that's okay. We're going to technically open the public hearing, since you've made the presentation.
Okay.
And I don't know, you know, if you wanted to say anything else before I set you down.
No, that's fine.
You okay? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead then, and we will officially open the public hearing on this. And I don't think anyone will come forward, because Mr. Moses is the only person here tonight, so I will close that. Now, the Planning Commission can take this under consideration, and we may ask some questions, Mr. Moses, and if we do, we'll get you to come up probably to the microphone. But anyone now have any comments or anything they'd like to talk about before we ask Mr. Moses? Or if you have something, feel free to ask him, and he'll come up to the podium.
I don't have any specific questions, other than, you know, I think it's a reasonable request of mine, you know, with, with Phases 3 and 4. It certainly doesn't make any sense not to, not to grant it, and that kind of curtail the activity. So it just makes, to me, it makes common sense to, to, you know, react favorably to the request.
I, I would tend to agree with Kevin. I just want, this is not a suggestion of any sort, but I just wanted to ask the city, from a city perspective, is there any downside to this? Is there any reason why we or City Council should be considering not granting such an extension?
I can't really think of any reason not to.
I would think it'd be pretty obvious to some of your folks if there were, and I just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that Mr. Moses probably wishes this thing was built a long time before, and, you know, it would have been the city's hope, but if he doesn't get his extension, essentially Phase 2 never...
Oh, I think the request is perfectly reasonable. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
I don't think you are.
Okay.
Unless some of my staff...
I'd just like to know a little bit more about Building 2 and 3. I have no objections to it, I'm just trying to educate myself on what's going on there.
Because we have some new members, Mr. Moses, and they're not as familiar with this probably as, as some of us are, because we, we, but if you could refresh a little bit for...
Okay.
Several of the new members, that would be good. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, so Phase 1, Building 1's complete. Building 2 is shown at 45 degrees, that's the one we want to build next. And then, the Phase 2, 3, that's Building 3 in Phase 2. And so we'll do all the site work you see around Buildings 2 and 3 in this one swoop. Then we'll build Building 2, and then we'll build Building 3. And then we hope to move over and build Building 6. Building 6 is all commercial. It looks exactly like Building 1 and, and Building 3. Now, if you notice, Building 2 and Building 4 and 5 are a little bit smaller. They should look that way. Actually, 4 and 5 look identical to...
Yeah.
But Building 2 is a little shorter than Buildings 1 and 3, and that was by design so we could get the fire truck around the backside of Building 1 and the backside of Building 3 and still be able to project fire suppression into the back of Building 2 if necessary.
And how many units will be in Building 2?
Building 2 is still going to have eight units. The thing is, is we had to shave off about 12 feet of that building on one side. So a two-bedroom, two of the two bedrooms downstairs or on the first floor above the ground are now going to be one bedroom, one bath. And those are already got a waiting list.
What kind of rent are you looking at, for one bedroom?
It'll be under $1,000.
Under $1,000.
It'll be under $1,000. And then, above that, that townhouse, four-bedroom, is now going to be a one-over-one townhouse. So it'll be two, two baths, two, two full bedrooms.
What kind of rent are they commanding?
Probably $1,100, $1,200.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're, right now, I'd get, for the two-bedroom, two baths in Phase 1, I get about $1,400 if you're facing food line, $1,450 if you're facing the pond. And then the four bedrooms, three baths, I've got a waiting list, probably at least eight people wanting the four bedrooms.
Okay.
And those are up close to $2,000 a month.
And what about Phase, your Building 3 there?
Building 3 would be identical to Building 1. Building 4 and 5 will be identical to Building 2. And Building 6 is all commercial. And when I get that CO, then I'm allowed to go build the townhouses in Phase 4. There's 16 townhouses, approximately.
So you're kind of hoping to get going with the breaking of the ground pretty soon?
Yes, ma'am. Billy, yeah, we've switched lenders. We think we switched lenders. He couldn't be here tonight. I've already forwarded his, his regrets to Karen and Wylie, but...
So is that the delay, financial reasons that it's been delayed, or...
We, we have been struggling with, okay, so, good question. We got started on this project with Virginia Company Bank. We had, Virginia Company Bank had a lot of Pecosin people on the board. While we were constructing Building 1, Eastern Virginia Bank bought out Virginia Company Bank, but they stuck with us because they couldn't back out then. Before we closed on the final loan for Building 1, which made it a term loan from a construction loan, EVB had been bought out by Sona, Southern National. I know it's being recorded. I'm worried that some people there at the bank don't even know how to spell Pecosin or say it. And that's harsh, but that's the way we feel about it right now. We have been waiting, and so we are looking at going with another bank. And the other bank is one in town that is very much familiar with Pecosin. And they're very happy to be with us.
Heard a commitment from them?
We're finalizing the loan now. I do, I have a preliminary term sheet, I do not have a final term sheet. Where we've been trying to sort out is, you know, the, they lend money based on income versus expenses, not really by how much it costs, it's an income basis. We've got one building paying all the taxes and all the cost of where Building 2 goes and Building 3, and where Phase 4 is going to go, and where Phase 3 is going to go. So identifying and itemizing out those specific expenses to those future buildings has been agonizing, and so I think we're straight now with the bank, and now they can do an apple's an apple saying, this goes to Building 1, this will be the loan, because they've got to buy out the previous banker, because that's all one parcel. So they've got to buy out the bank who currently has the loan for Bank, for Building 1, to give the construction loan to Building 2, and it's going to be one per. And so they have to do it based on income and expenses. It's, it's...
So Phase, Building 1, 2, and 3 are on the same parcel, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So this venture will encompass not only the answer of Phase 1 of Building 1, but provide construction loan for 2 and 3?
That's correct.
What kind of occupancy do they require before they go into 3?
They would, well, they, they won't, they would like it stabilized, so that basically means it's not really based on the occupancy, it's based on how much rental income I'm getting versus the expenses. And so we, we expect the residential to go quick. It did in Building 1, it will in Building 2 and 3. We seem to have encouraged the market to look at us. I think location is part of it, and I think pricing is the other part.
I have a quick question for you, just, what fulfilled, so, an extension till 2021, what fulfill, what's the technical, how far along do you have to be? Just break ground before 2021? Is that the, and then that part will be fulfilled for this?
Well, let me see. According as, I think it has to be completed.
And rented, or just building completed?
Certificate of occupancy for...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
The project is not considered, not, if the project is not constructed and fully operational...
Okay. Fully operational, okay. By 2021?
Certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Okay. And you expect that by the 2021?
We are hoping to get on with it, yes. We have been in an idle position. I was promised the Building 2 loan before I'd finished the Building 1 loan. In fact, I'd been promised it before I started construction of Building 1. Building 2 was supposed to be on the heels of Building 1. It never happened, one merger after another, and we have been forgotten, hate to say. This other bank is very committed to seeing us get this completed, built out. And if they don't take it, we've got another bank in town that will. So we're, no more delays, playing games.
I was just wondering if the 2021 is quite aggressive, or if that's...
It's going to be ambitious to finish the townhouses as well, because I cannot start the townhouses until I build Building 6. I'm happy to entertain an extension on the extension, but I will leave that to y'all to decide what, what you think might be reasonable. If you want to extend that by two more years to give me time to finish the townhouses, I'm happy to discuss that further.
The reality of it is, finish this project in two years is very aggressive, not likely to occur. I mean, generally, just based on my experience.
We are, we are hoping to at least be cracking open the townhouses about the same time as we crack open Buildings 4 and 5. Now, to do Building 6, I need four pre-leases on the commercial. That bank is, and we have half that right now, so...
Commitments on that commercial lease?
We got two of the four we need. So we just need to get on with the advertising, and that, that's happening now as well. It'll, it'll help when I get in there and clear everything, and I put the driveway all the way through, and folks can get a good feel for what the Fountains really is.
Leasing agent in there?
I have a residential leasing agent, a local real estate firm. The commercial one, I've just been working with, the person who has brought me the first potential tenant for Building 6. But I'm happy to work, I don't have anyone signed up on the commercial side. So if you know a really good, someone who may be interested in working with us to find commercial tenants, we're, we're all ears. You know, I think it, I think it is aggressive, September 2021. However, I, I think it prudent to keep that target, because if we extend it any further... I hear you. You know, banks will say, well, you know, we got another five years, and we got... Oh, I'm, I'm happy to use that as a way that we got to keep this rolling. I, that was my, that was my thought.
I think we need to stick with that, too.
Well, I do, and I, I, I agree with what Kevin says, because it does make, it does really make a whole lot of sense to extend Phase 2 beyond the other two phases, which already are set for 2021.
Right.
And, you know, they're not in this particular question, so I think we should, just dealing with the question that we've got right now, it makes a lot of sense to tie them all to the same date.
Exactly.
And then, if something happens in, in two and a half years, we see what happens then, but...
Yeah. I can always come back and ask for an extension.
Yeah.
For three or four, if necessary. But we do plan not to come back for an extension on Phase 2. We, we hope this is it.
I understand. I understand.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I move that, that we recommend that the City Council approve the extension.
Okay, second.
Second.
Karen?
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett. Aye.
Commissioner Travis. Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber.
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of 5 to 0.
All right, and that will go to council's meeting.
Go to City Council.
City Council.
Yes, ma'am.
On...
We're not sure if it's going to go on the 8th or the 22nd.
Okay.
We've got to see what the schedule is.
And they will, they will...
We've got to be able to advertise it, yeah.
They'll have the final say on that, but we have recommended that they do amend or modify your, your current...
Thank you all.
Situation. All right, good luck. Okay, so moving on to, I guess we'll do communications and correspondence, and Wylie, I'll go to you first.
Well, a few things. We do believe that we will get the leasing plans in within another day or two. I have been in... And just said, we're going to call this plan, because it's kind of a combination of a site plan and a development plan. We got that straightened out. We're looking at our checklist. I expect to see it any day now. So, so that's coming in, and... Porter Creek, we're still reviewing that. I think we've talked to Porter Creek before. Person who's asking some questions about grinder pumps right now. Let's see, big plans, big plans. We've got a few violations that we're out after, but I'm not going to call them. But, but we've got a few of those that we're working on, and that's taken a fair amount of staff time. We're also just kind of thoughtful, we're working through trying to clarify our sign requirements. We've got Article 6, it talks about signs and the right-of-ways. Where we're going to go in that direction with an eye towards efficiently separate right-of-way signs from private property signs, which is in Appendix D. I'm working on some subdivision orders, trying to get that in accord with current state code. That's, I think, I think we're going to do that first. What we'll do after that is we'll start looking at specific issues. Currently, we'll be needing the Planning Commission's feedback when we get to... Already noted, we're sort of going through the zoning order. Probably, probably you lost work sessions as we... That's about all I've got. Unless there's specific questions.
Hey, do you mind if I ask a question real quick? Just going back to conditional use permits and expiring, that brought me back to the GATA auto sales that was a conditional use. And with the utility relocation, is that building, I, I remember when that was approved by council, they said, well, it's not going to be here for very long because of with creek widening. So with the utility relocation, is that, I don't know if you would know that?
That's a very good question. I wasn't familiar with that particular... Surprising, since I'm fairly new here, but, but yeah, we'll need to check. You know, what's name?
GATA? G A I T A? It's not G A I T A.
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Well, we will have a meeting if it's the...
Great. Will we do a work session at 6:30 before that, do you think?
I don't think we need to.
Okay.
But let me, let me see where we are on several of our... It depends on whether we get a work session with City Council with...
Oh, I'll just say, tonight, we have a new member on, sort of a new member. He actually served on Planning Commission some years ago, and we're glad to have him back, Kevin Brennan. He's here tonight. And Kevin, we welcome you and look forward to serving with you again.
Thank you very much.
I know I enjoyed serving with you, and glad to have you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. And I'm going to close, I'm going to let you have any say you'd like to at this time.
All right.
We always go down and, so we'll start on your end, as usual.
I have no specific comments, other than happy to be, you know, back at the, back mission. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Libby?
I have nothing else.
My only thing, thank you, Karen. I called up Karen earlier today and asked all sorts of non-conforming 101 side setback questions, and thank you so much for taking the time to...
All right, two quick things, but I think it's worth mentioning. And first of all, we all know that Commissioner Fennesson's not here. I don't know if we put the pieces together, but she's supposedly in New Zealand, where of course all the activity was over the weekend. As far as I know, she would not be anywhere, I don't know her very well. I don't think she would be anywhere near that, but I think we should at least keep in mind that we do have a commissioner who's in that area right now. And the other comment is, if you may remember, the last meeting, we had a young lady, and I believe her name was Tris Trail, she talked about water erosion onto her property. And we got into a lot of conversation about other things than what she brought up. And, and I, I don't know if we pay attention to this, I don't know if this is a thing that the city looks at. I, I kind of tried to work my way through city code, that is one heck of a job, by the way, but the way I read the city code is, for somebody to have done that, they have to have permission. Now, this person may have had permission... Now, this person may have had permission, I don't know that, but it certainly seems to me that it's something that, if, if, if the city's not keeping an eye on, we ought to. If you go down that part of Pecosin, and I'm more familiar with that part, because that's where I live, there's a, there's a bunch of houses that are stuck up in the air, on ground. I, I assume that they're all approved, but I don't know. I just don't, I'm not asking anybody to tell me, I'm just saying it's something we might want to keep in mind, because she certainly raised what sounded like a reasonable question, but I don't know. Other than that, everybody have a great day.
Have anything else to say? If they don't, we'll adjourn the meeting. Kevin, you got lucky tonight, this was a short one.
It was a good one.
Maybe your good luck charm.